Three, two, one.
Good evening. Welcome to the February 4th City Council Meeting. I'm Gina Louise Shara. I'm the City Council President and I will be presiding this evening. We will begin as always with public comment. I'll note that this meeting and all who are participating with it in it with us on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. To raise your hand, you click on, either you click on the participants button at the bottom of the screen and a horizontal menu bar will open up. It's now at the bottom, or it also now depending on what version of Zoom you've downloaded is under reactions. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me. I'll do my best to monitor that for people struggling, but it's only purpose that we'll use that feature for. I'll unmute each raised hand one by one and ask if you'd like to make a comment. When you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record to ensure everyone has equal opportunity to speak. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. After three minutes, I'll ask you to please finish your sentence. According to our rules, we do not respond during public comment as it's your time to speak. So while your comments should be directed to us, you'll understand when we don't respond to you. You may speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. And I ask that all but the council turn off your video until called upon as your comments are directed to the council and only the person recognized has the floor. We'll do our best to act quickly. If someone is clearly acting in a way that's inappropriate or deploying profanity or slurs or displaying something outside of what we would expect in council chambers, and I'll remove anyone that needs to be removed from the meeting. If you don't wish to make a comment, you can always watch on Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's YouTube channel or their other platforms. The recording of this meeting will be available at Northampton Open Media's Government Video Archive Channel on YouTube. And I thank them as always for that public service. I'll remind people that we're always happy to get comments by email and they're equally part of the public record. You can email us at citycouncil@northamptonma.gov. So we will start with public comments. And I'm not, oh, there's, there's a hand. Taylo.
Hi, my name is Ace Taylo, They Them. I'm speaking on behalf of the Northampton Housing Partnership. I, as the partnership would like to speak in support of the ordinance to create an incentive for smaller houses by allowing two half-scale units to count as a legal family for density purposes. It's very important that we increase the housing in Northampton in a meaningful and affordable way. Based on our observations and discussions, this ordinance will do that. So we would like to lend our support to this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for other hands. I don't see anyone in the chat. Any other public comment this evening? Give it one more moment. Councilor Nash, you don't have anyone on the phone, do you?
That's a good question. I have not received a call, so.
Just checking, don't want to.
Thank you. Yeah, you are good.
Don't want to leave anyone out. Okay. All right, going once, going twice. Anyone need to raise a physical hand if they can't find the feature which keeps moving about? Okay, seeing no other public comments, we will convene the meeting. Laura, will you please take the role?
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start with two announcements of public hearings. The first one is an announcement of public hearing on 20.173 National Grid petition for installation of underground conduit on Hockenham Road. The petition number is 16315676. For National Law Chapter 166, Section 22, the Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 18th, 2021, at 7:15 PM on the petition of National Grid to install underground conduit and associated features on Hockenham Road. Instructions for accessing the hearing may be found on the February 18th, 2021 City Council Agenda to be posted on the city website at northhamptonma.gov at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. And the next public hearing that we're announcing is on 21.188, Application for License to Store Flammables and Combustibles at 138 North King Street. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 148, Section 13, Big Y Foods, Inc. has submitted an application for a license for storage of flammables and combustibles for two 20,000-gallon underground fuel storage tanks, one 20,000-gallon gasoline and one 20,000-gallon split tank, 10,000 gasoline, 10,000 diesel, within the existing Big Y supermarket parking lot in 138 North King Street. City Council will hold a public hearing by remote participation on Thursday, February 18th, 2021, at 7:05 PM. Instructions for accessing the hearing may be found on the February 18th, 2021 City Council Agenda to post on the city website, northhamptonma.gov, at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. The City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. And the City Council meeting begins at 7:00 PM and that hearing then is at 7:05 PM. Next, we have an actual public hearing. And this is a public hearing on a package of National Grid and Verizon poll petitions to install, relocate, and/or remove a total of 37 utility polls on Damon Road and four utility polls on Bridge Road in connection with the Mass. Damon Road Reconstruction Project. So according to Mass General Law Chapter 166, Section 22, a public hearing will be held today, Thursday, February 4th, 2021, at 7:05 PM. We're actually pretty close to that time for once, on the following joint petitions of National Grid and Verizon New England and sole petitions of National Grid to install, relocate, or remove poles and wires upon and along, under, or across one or more public ways. So I'm gonna read.
Could I make a motion to put, to open the public hearing, or would you prefer I wait?
You, we can do that. And then I will read, I want to read the DPW recommendations because this is a little bit of a complicated, these are complicated applications or petitions, and I have some notes from Director LaScalia as well, so.
So I moved, moved to open the public hearing so that that can be read in the context of the hearing.
Seconded by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on opening the hearing? Roll call, please, Laura, on opening the hearing.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is open. I'm first gonna just read a little bit of a summary that Laura wrote for me, having spoken to Director LaScalia, and then I will read the recommendations. So this application affects a total of 37 utility polls on Damon Road and five on Bridge Road. Of the total of 37 polls on Damon Road affected, 31 are being relocated, five new polls are being installed, and one is being removed. And it says despite the fact that so many polls are being relocated, the only conflict with city utilities noted is that one poll, which is the P-7-25 poll, appears to be less than five feet from a fire hydrant and five feet of separation is required. So I'm gonna go ahead and now read these recommendations to give you a fuller view. So this is from Director LaScalia. I have reviewed Department of Public Works, DPW, this is, sorry, I should say, this is the one for Damon. This is the first one on the agenda for Bridget. I've reviewed Department of Public Works records and smittles, including images, sketches, and reconstruction plans for Mass DOT Damon Road Project Number 608236. This petition includes a proposed relocation of one single ownership SO poll owned by National Grid, referenced in City Council Order 20.174, and the proposed relocation of three joint ownership JO polls shared between National Grid and Verizon, referenced in City Council Order 20.177. The one SO single ownership poll is numbered 96-84 on Bridge Road. This poll is to be located at a point approximately 378 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of North King Street and Bridge Road and continuing approximately 29 feet and six inches in a, in a north direction. No potential conflicts were observed. The three JO joint ownership polls include three polls numbered P-96, P-97, P-98 on Bridge Road. These polls are to be located beginning at a point approximately 123 feet northwest of the center line, the intersection between North King Street and Bridge Road and continuing approximately 400 feet in the west direction. No potential conflicts were observed. A valid trench permit approved by DPW is required before work at these locations commences. And then I'm gonna read the recommendation for the Damon Road, also from Director LaScalia. I've reviewed, I've reviewed Department of Public Works records, including images, sketches, reconstruction plans for Mass DOT Damon Project Number 608236. This petition includes a proposed installation and relocation of five single ownership SO polls owned by National Grid, referenced in City Council Order 20.175, and the proposed installation, removal, and relocation of 32 joint ownership JO polls shared between National Grid and Verizon, referenced City Council Order 20.176. The five SO polls on Damon Road include proposed installation of two polls numbered PO, sorry, P-050 and P-7-50, and proposed relocation of three polls numbered P-16, P-17, and P-18. These polls are to be located at a point approximately 57 feet northeast of the center line and intersection of North King Street and Damon Road and continuing approximately 339 feet in an east direction. No potential conflicts were observed. The 32 JO polls numbered P-1 through P-31 on Damon Road include proposed installation of three, removal of one, and relocation of 28 polls. These polls are to be located beginning at a point approximately 140 feet northeast of the center line, the intersection between North King Street and Damon Road and continuing approximately 4,200 feet in an east direction. The proposed relocation of P-7-25 ULT7 on Mass DOT plans appears to be less than five feet from a hydrant. Please provide a minimum separation of five feet. We know that P-7-25 has shown 35 feet east of P-7 on the petition, but appears to be 35 feet west of P-7 on Sheet 43 of the utility plan submitted for a trench permit. Please clarify the location in writing to the DPW, Attention Director LaScalia, Donna, Director Donald LaScalia. A valid trench permit approved by DPW is required before work at these locations commences. Okay, so those were the memos from the DPW. And I see that Director LaScalia is also here, but first up with a hearing, I will ask if there are proponents. And I know that I saw Lisa Jazinski from National Grid is here.
I, I am Gina. Also, there's a D Lopez that is on, and I think that, that's, that's who will be talking to you about this, I believe.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, D Lopez.
Thanks.
Hi. Welcome. Do you want to speak to these petitions?
With regard to 7-25?
Um, let's see, where do you want to start? We're kind of looking at them as a group, but if they're saying that you want to, do you want to talk about sort of the whole project and the petitions, or it's saying in particular you want to?
I mean, there was only one polling question, which was 7-25, which was closer to the water hydrant. I can forward that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you super well.
I'm saying that 7-25 is the only point that has like any issues. I can forward the information to DOT and to National, and I can see what.
Okay, I keep losing you at the moment when you're telling, I think you're saying you will forward that concern to Mass DOT, is that right? You're.
Yes, I'll forward this information. I'm sorry that I'm, like, cutting up, but I'm definitely forwarding the information to DOT and.
Okay.
So Gina?
Yeah.
I, I, it is breaking up a little bit with Daniel, but I, you know, I think that I can just even follow up with him to make sure that the, the correct people are notified that that needs to be, that needs to be moved, so it has five feet of clearance from that fire hydrant.
Okay.
And also just that if for anybody that's listening, that the whole installation or relocation of these polls has to do with a road widening project for Damon Road. And that's, that's basically that, that's what has prompted the work.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody doesn't know that, but.
Um, and is there anyone else that's here to speak to it, Lisa, that you know?
I don't know. I, I don't know. And Daniel, I don't know if you can speak up. Have you heard from any abutters, sorry about that, any abutters that have complained or had concerns or any questions about this odd work?
No, I have not heard from any abutters complaining about any of the locations.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So let me ask, are there any other proponents that want to speak to this? These petitions? I don't see any, any, any opponents that would like to speak to it. Okay. I don't see any. Counselor Dwight.
I'm just confirming, Laura, you said you sent out close to 35 abutter notifications?
Yes.
Okay. And did you receive any responses or any concerns, trusty?
No, no phone calls or any other responses.
And Lisa, I'll, I'll address this to you because your signal seems to be strongest. The, because it's associated with the widening, I presume that the polls, of course, will be spaced wider, be set back deeper into the abutting properties as it goes.
That's correct. And, and I looked at this, and Daniel can confirm it if he can hear me, but I've looked at this, and the polls run on, let me think about this, is that the south side of Damon Road? I think that that's what you would call it. So the main line goes down the south side, and the people on the south side of Damon Road are the ones that will be most affected. The ones, you know, of course, on the north side already sit fairly close to the road as it is. So I would think that if we had heard from somebody, it would have been those folks, and it would have been Daniel, or maybe Mass DOT has already spoken with these folks. I don't, I don't know that.
Can I also presume that, and I know that in the past, sometimes we've, we've located polls that actually turned out to be in the middle of existing sidewalks or planned sidewalks eventually. And I, I know that part of this project development discussion is the creation of a sidewalk system as well. And I'm going to also assume that you guys are a lot, in a lot more frequent contact and collaborating with the other various, the various other construction design people, so that we don't have a, say, an instance where we ended up a poll near the end of Jackson Street that literally was in the middle of a sidewalk, replicating that.
Yeah, I, usually that, that should be taking place. Daniel was out there on those site visits, and he might be able to answer that if he can still hear. I, that's usually gone over with the, the DOT to make sure that, you know, that that doesn't happen. But Daniel, I don't know if you can hear me, but maybe you can confirm that, that we know that it's not going to interfere with any sidewalks.
No, no poll should interfere with any sidewalk. They, they, they were discussed thoroughly, so they should be in a, in a good position, in a good spot.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's, that's what I was assuming, but you need the verification. I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big change.
Okay. Are there other, Counselor Quinlan?
Thanks. I, I, this may be a question that might be answered by a counselor. It may be answered by Director LaScalia or Lisa. I just want to understand what we're, that, that we're being asked to approve this, but the director has also asked for updated information. Just in terms of how the timeline works, our approval tied in with that and, and the, you know, the information getting to the director. I wonder, how does that work? You know, just so we have an understanding of what we're voting about tonight, what we're, what we're deliberating on. I just want to make sure I can get it.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I apologize for the bad video feed here, but hopefully everyone can hear me. So the answer to that question is that before polls can be set, which is considered an alteration of the public way, a trench permit has to be issued by me, by my office, with the director's signature on it. And, and so in this case, I'm holding the trench permits for this project pending your approval of this poll petition tonight. And prior to me releasing those trench permits, I would just follow up with National Grid and make sure that we have all the information that we need. So even once the poll petition is approved, there's still a trench permit process that Grid does have to go through because they are altering the public way. And that's actually why we have the trench permit processed in place and why we write right on the poll petition memo that we submit to you folks that a trench permit is required. And that way we can close the loop on any outstanding items.
Great, thank you.
Any other, any other discussion? From the council or from the public?
Move to close the public hearing, please.
Seconded. Motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on closing? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is closed, and so next we need to vote on these. Counselor Dwight.
Um, normally, in the past, what we've done is these have been unfolded in the consent agenda. Is it because of the scope and size of this project that we're making separate items?
We've sort of been moving towards voting on them after the hearing and not embedding them in the consent agenda. So this wouldn't be the, this, we've now done this a few times where we take the vote sort of within, right after we've closed the hearing, as we're still on that item.
I've, I've no objection, just trying to keep the pace with the, with the rule sets off. Well, then, in that case, I would move approval as a package of these, of these petitions.
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Quinlan, to move these as a group or a package. So, again, these are these 37 polls that we're moving as a group. Any discussion? Counselor Dwight.
Just as a follow-up, and I won't make a condition of the motion, but of course, it goes without saying that, and, and as, as Director LaScalia explained, that all the conditions and terms that are laid out by the Department of Public Works will be addressed to their, to the DPW satisfaction.
Yes. Any other discussion?
Gina, that, the, those forms that were, that came from the DPW from Donna, they will be forwarded on to us?
I'm sure we can forward them. They can be grabbed off this agenda if you'd like, but we can also make sure that you get a copy of them.
That would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Maori?
Yeah, so just to clarify, Counselor Dwight, you're saying if we vote to approve, excuse me, and the director of BPW finds an issue, she, she has the kind of authority to stop the process there?
As, yes, as, as she laid out, essentially, nothing goes beyond the approval of the trench permits, and she has the authority of the trench permits. And so if, if, if no one meets those conditions to her satisfaction, the project stops. So, yeah, and I, and I have every, every confidence that the whole idea is not to subvert the project, but to improve the project and enhance it. And so I have a deep and abiding faith in the, in the DPW director. So, but she does have that authority. So that's why, I mean, our authority is essentially to approve the permits barring any other express conflict or concerns expressed by abutters in law.
Right. No, that's excellent. So we don't have nine counselors meandering on Damon Road, looking at sidewalks. So, okay, that's.
Measuring that to that hydrant. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, those have been approved. Thank you so much, Lisa and Daniel.
All right.
Okay, moving on. Next, we have updates from committee chairs. Counselor Dwight.
As we were trying to suss out before this meeting convened, there will be not a continuation of a joint hearing, but a joint meeting of the Planning Board and Legislative Matters on the, on the 25th to discuss the proposed two-family housing ordinances that will eventually come back before this, this body. But the purpose is, is information gathering and further discussion. That's, but the public is invited to share their opinions and also hear the discussion and witness the debate. I defer to Laura and then Counselor Jarrett.
Just a quick correction that that's on February 8th, this Monday at 7:00 PM. Sorry if I can see this too early.
No, that's, I understand now. Yes, sorry. Good catch, by the way. No, that, that's, I understand now. Yes, sorry. Good catch, by the way.
Okay. Other chairs? Moving on to one-minute announcements. Counselor Quinlan and Counselor Foster.
We have a big week coming up, this coming week for the Northampton Policing Review Commission. On Monday, the eighth, there's a, a meeting of one of the subcommittees, it's policing policies and practices. And they're going to be joined by Chief Casper for, for a little Q and A. And then on Wednesday, the Alternatives to Policing Subcommittee is also being joined by Chief Casper with, with some question and answer period. So it should be interesting chance to, to bounce the ideas off of the chief and see what, what sort of answers there are. So, and then in addition to that, sorry, Thursday, the ninth, we'll be holding the second of our public hearings as well. That'll begin at six PM and the agendas will be posted. I think they're already posted to the city website. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So Counselor Foster and Counselor Jarrett.
Mine's just a quick correction about the date.
Okay.
Is that okay about what Michael Quinlan said? Thursday, our public hearing is Thursday, the eleventh.
Okay. Okay, so that's Thursday, February eleventh for the public hearing. Thank you. Counselor Foster.
Thank you, Counselor Jarrett. I could tell that it was a related, so I'm glad to have you jump in. I just wanted to share that Dr. Joanne Levin from Cooley Dickinson Hospital has emailed the council to say that there are openings for adults now seventy-plus if they sign up tonight through the Department of Public Health website for vaccine appointments for tomorrow. So there are enough vaccines, so she's asked for our assistance in spreading the word there.
Excellent, thank you for that. Other announcements? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on to communications from the mayor, Mayor Narkwitz. There we go.
Um, good evening, councilors. I have one communication this evening. It was actually in response to a request from Counselor Jarrett, who had asked me to just provide a quick update on the city's work around municipal broadband in light of the resolution that you're taking up later on in the meeting. And so I just wanted to give a brief update and overview of where we are in that process. As you probably know, we did our first study of this issue back in the summer of 2016. We hired an outside consultant, Precipio Industries, to take a look at our city fiber network and look at the potentials for expanding it into a municipal broadband network. That was a really very cursory introductory study. One of the recommendations that came out of that was that we should pursue a more full market and feasibility study. And that was something that was confirmed when we met with other area broadband providers, including Whip City in Westfield. So in, as part of my capital improvement program that was submitted for FY twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-four, the, the city council ultimately approved two appropriations totaling seventy thousand dollars. The second part of that was approved just this summer, July, or last, July of twenty twenty. And that was essentially to fund a, a, a marketing analysis along with a feasibility study. So I put together an ad hoc advisory committee to help develop an RFP for those services to help with the evaluation of the proposals, to do interviews, et cetera. The advisory committee was comprised of Antonio Pagan, our chief information officer for the city, my chief of staff, Alan Wolf, your colleague, Counselor-at-Large, Bill Dwight, Al Williams, the executive director of Northampton Open Media, and then four city residents who've been very active on this issue and our members of Northampton Community Network, which is a, an advocacy group that's been advocating for municipal broadband. So Mark Hamel, Carl Townsend, Lee Felsher, and Pennington Geis also served on that committee. With their input, we were able to develop a request for proposals that was ultimately issued for this two-phase study. And we received bids from multiple companies. A smaller subset of the advisory committee, a group of four, actually conducted interviews with, with, with vendors. And then ultimately, in early October, after reviewing the various documents and interview outcomes, a unanimous recommendation was made to me by the entire advisory committee that the city should select a company called Design Nine to, to perform this study. I accepted that recommendation and we began putting together a contract with them and that contract was later executed later in October. Design Nine has been working on the first piece of this, which is the, the marketing analysis. And really what the marketing piece is, is really going out to the public, going out to the potential consumer base for such a network and really getting accurate information as to the need in the community and how much interest there would be if there was such a municipal network for people to, to want to buy into it and, and support it. And so Design Nine has been working on a survey that would, that would help accomplish that and has had a few follow-up meetings with city staff as that's been developed. And the goal will be to launch that survey, actually in, hopefully in, in, in the coming weeks. We hope to, we hope to get that finalized very soon and get it launched and get it out, spread out as far and wide as we can in the city. And we're also going to be working on a paper survey as well that would be mailed to folks. Obviously, we, we know one of the issues we're thinking about here is obviously the digital divide and the fact that there may be people who don't have access to good internet access as well as possibly seniors who may not have access as well as we've been finding out recently with the vaccine registration. So, so that is in the works and we're hoping to get that, that survey launched very soon. And that will hopefully give us some of the feedback that we need in terms of the, the market feasibility for creating municipal broadband. And then the second phase, depending on the results of the first phase, would then be the actual kind of nuts and bolts feasibility of how one would actually construct the network. And that's a much more technical analysis and, you know, looking at, looking at the current layout of the city and where there is fiber and where there's city fiber and where there are gaps, et cetera. So that would be a more detailed and it would also have information about what it may cost and what the, you know, what the capital investment as well as ideas about potential models for how something like this could operate. So we're well on our way. It's been launched. And again, we hope to have sort of the public outreach of this happening very soon. And obviously, we will let councilors know as soon as that is, is launched so that you can share with your networks as well. So we can hopefully get as much participation, public participation in the survey as possible. So I don't know, Counselor Dwight obviously was part of the process, so he had an opportunity to, to review and speak to the folks at Design Nine. They have done this for many other municipalities, so they do have experience. That was one of the things we wanted was some experience with, with working with other municipalities to, to explore and pursue this. So they, they do bring that experience as well as the technical experience, but Counselor Dwight may want to add to that as well.
Just to say that they also have, they're, they're more local than the other candidates that we saw apply and they have, and they're smaller, actually, which actually I think is, to their credit, it gives them one adaptability and pliability that wouldn't necessarily exist in a larger corporation analyzing larger urban systems, which is what many of the other applicants had. They're all good. Honestly, all of them were great. But Design Nine had a responsiveness and, and an understanding of the size and type of New England community that's, that's facing some unique challenges that the other businesses would just try to be catching up and getting up to speed with. So that's, Design Nine was, was the clear winner in this ultimately and, and I'm pretty confident about and looking forward to their final report.
Thank you, yeah. So that's my update. And again, we'll, we'll, I mean, the next piece of this will obviously be, you know, we, we are sort of on a parallel track. You may recall that we did take a vote in FY twenty twenty-one on the first required vote on a municipal light plant. We sort of did that proactively just so that we wouldn't lose a fiscal year. And that was in June of last year. I will likely bring a similar vote forward this June, maybe with even more information from the study at that point as well. But, so we're going to try to just keep this, keep things on track and keep our options open and keep an open mind and see what, you know, what the results are. But the marketing one will be very interesting because that's obviously something we heard loud and clear from, from Westfield, which, you know, had a fully, has a full gas and electric utility and, you know, controlled the utility and had, you know, control of all the poles and have, you know, the trucks and all of that. And so, but even they, you know, needed to be clear for their, for their, you know, the type of investment that would be necessary, that there actually was a market. So they really did, you know, they did studies and then they actually used the marketing analysis to actually decide where to pilot broadband in the city. You know, neighborhoods that responded, you know, most, most favorably, they use those as the Fiber Hoods, as they're called, and sort of rolled it out slowly over time. So, so we're sort of following, I think, best practice that we've seen in, in other regions. Obviously, Northampton is very different because we do not have a municipal light company. We don't, we don't have our own, you know, municipal electric company. And so that would be, that would be an infrastructure that doesn't exist. And so that'll be, make, that will make our model different than the ones that you're hearing discussed, maybe in Holyoke and Chickopee and Westfield, where they already have actual, you know, public utilities in the electric sphere that, that have been operational for a long time. So more to come. We'll keep you posted. And again, stay tuned for the, for the surveys, which we'll be pushing out soon.
Excellent. Thank you for that, that update. Can I just ask a question on the survey? Is the, the mailed one, is that going to all residents or is it going to be just a sample, trying to get a representative sample?
No, we're going to try to mail it to, we're going to try to mail it to all residents. And actually, Antonio has been in discussions with, with our city clerk because we're about to mail the census to all households. And so we're exploring the possibility of, of including it in the census as a way to kind of piggyback those two things. So that's something that she's going to be discussing with the board of registrars. And so we're discussing that. But in either case, it'll either be, you know, that methodology or it'll be a straight mailed survey that will go to all households. And so people will have an opportunity. And, you know, there'll be a, you know, there'll be a, kind of like the census, you, you'll get it in the mail and you'll still have an opportunity to do it online if you want to. But if you do want to mail a paper survey, you'll have that ability as well. So we just want to make sure we're casting as wide a net as possible and, and getting as much feedback as we can.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor Labarge has a question, that's okay.
Mayor, where is Design Nine located?
Hmm. They're in the cloud. No, I don't, that's a really good question. Let me, uh...
Counselor Dwight, do you have the answer?
They're in Maine, they're in the state of Maine, I believe.
Yeah, um, I think that's right. They're definitely New England-based. I, I, I can try to pull that up for you. I'd have to go pull up the contract, but I can, I can do that and, and let me just see. Yep, uh, let's see, contact. I'm just looking at their website right now. And interesting, I have, I have Blackbird, Virginia, actually, is what I am showing as their corporate headquarters. But again, there could be multiple companies. Yeah, this is them. Yeah, this is them. So I think they may be Virginia-based. But they definitely have folks that are, that are sort of based in New England. Because I first met one of the principals many, 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 almost, you know, a year and a half ago when we first started having, when we did the Precipio study, it kind of, I don't know, created a buzz or, or people were probably doing searches of, of communities that were doing broadband studies. But he kind of paid a visit to me out of the blue. He was actually going to Williamsburg because they had just, not Williamsburg, Williamstown, because they had just done a study in Williamstown. So he was on his way to Williamstown. So I know they've done studies in and around New England and Massachusetts, but I do think, I think it's Virginia.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. On next up, we have a resolution. This is a resolution opposing internet data caps and committing to achieving just internet access and affordability. I'm going to read it and then take a motion. Okay, this is in the city council, February fourth, twenty twenty-one, upon the recommendation of Counselor Gina Louise Shara, Counselor William H. Dwight, and Counselor James Nash. Resolution opposing internet data caps and committing to achieving just internet access and affordability. Whereas the internet has become a critical utility for individuals, families, businesses, and government. And whereas during COVID nineteen, during the COVID nineteen pandemic, internet access has become even more essential to safely participate in education, earn a living, obtain healthcare, connect with family, friends, and community, and participate in local government. And whereas Northampton residents are primarily served by Comcast Xfinity for their internet service. And whereas Comcast, Comcast Xfinity has announced for the first time the imposition of a quote "data cap" beginning in the spring of twenty twenty-one. That will place a limit on the amount of data an internet consumer may utilize before facing additional charges for internet service. And whereas data caps have no purpose for the consumer, they do not address network traffic or peak time capacity as they are based on a monthly total of usage. Their relevance was proven by Comcast when they suspended already existing data caps in other parts of the country from the, from the beginning of the COVID nineteen pandemic to July twenty twenty without detriment to the network. And whereas the rising cost of internet access, unimpeded by lack of market competition and the increased service demand during the pandemic is of concern to residents across Northampton. And whereas on December thirty-first, twenty twenty, a group of seventy-one Massachusetts legislators sent a letter to Comcast Xfinity urging them to reconsider their decision to impose this data cap. And whereas is the case with all essential utilities, the city of Northampton has a responsibility to ensure affordable access to all residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton City Council urges Comcast Xfinity to reverse their decision to impose a data cap on customers. And be it further resolved that the Northampton City Council urges our state and federal legislative delegation to consider consumer protection legislation to regulate and end data caps. Be it further resolved that the Northampton City Council commits to evaluating internet services moving forward with the goal of ensuring all residents have equitable and affordable options to necessary high-quality internet. And be it further resolved that the city of Northampton shall continue to explore just and fair alternative internet services, service systems for the vital use of the entire community. Be it further resolved that the administrative assistance to the city council shall cause a copy of this resolution to be sent to the Federal Communications Commission, Senator Elizabeth Warren, Senator Edward Markey, Congressman Jim McGovern, State Senator Joe Comerford, and the state representative Lindsay Sabadosa.
For approval, please.
Motion made by Counselor Dwight and seconded by Counselor Thorpe. And I'm happy to lead the discussion unless one of the other cosponsors would like to go first. Okay, um, so I would like to say that we're really happy to join our neighboring partners in Holyoke and Springfield and West Springfield and Agawam in bringing forward resolutions in our communities to stand up to Comcast's plans that they announced to impose data caps on Northeast customers. Initially, the caps, as it says in the resolution, the caps were to start now with penalties beginning in March. And, but now in response to communities standing up, including its home state of Pennsylvania, whose AG has said that this was not right, they have said that they will now postpone these data caps until the summer. So they're not going to not impose them. So they're not going to not impose them. They're just giving a little bit more time. So a little bit of information, the fees are ten dollars for additional fifty gigs. And for every fifty gigs, it's ten dollars with a cap of a hundred dollars per month. That's what the the additional fees would be. And, you know, as the resolution says, these caps have nothing to do with helping spread usage or solve any problems of an overburdened system. They're purely for profit and to drive consumers to more expensive plans. I think it's safe to say that it's outrageous to try and squeeze consumers for anything more at a time when robust home access is a necessity for school, work, telehealth, community engagement, being in public, local government meetings, staying connected with your family and friends, and all these things that we are not able to do in person. And I think we also realize that as we hopefully move past this pandemic, many of the things, how we do many things will change and will remain, have changed and will remain changed. And that reliable and safe internet access is a necessary, a necessary utility. It will be a necessity and as it has been for a while, but even more than ever. So the idea that they're going to give us a little bit more time, but then impose these caps feels like it's not really any large S on their part. And I think we all need to stand up and say that this is an uncontrollable thing to do. So again, I want to thank my, the cosponsors here in North Hampton, Counselor Dwight and Counselor Nash. Counselor Dwight, as Mayor Nerkowitz was just saying before, has been working on this issue of municipal broadband or Wi-Fi in our city for many, many years. I think it's been a passion of his for a while. And I also want to thank Amy Tolson of Ward Three, who helped bring this to my attention. And I want to especially thank Counselor Rebecca Lisi of Holyoke for all of her work on this and for really enthusiastically embracing a collaborative approach and a sort of a mutual interest cross-community approach. I think it's very important for us to work together here in Western Mass. So I I hope our colleagues on the council will join us in supporting this. Counselor Dwight?
Amen. And just to be clear, historically, the, you know, Comcast is essentially a state sanctioned or federally sanctioned monopoly. There are no competing interests as far as cable. Now, they'll argue that, of course, ATT and Verizon are threatening with five G service and that they they offer data plans. And there's also systems that you can get over your phone line. But let's be clear, there is no, they have proprietary ownership of the cables that go to your house. They own the pipeline. And they are a corporation. I'm not, you know, I'm not talking about seizing the means of production here, but the fact is, is what I'm talking about is their postponement. It's not done on, as the the Council President mentioned, it's not an act of altruism. It's not, they, they, it's a, it's, it's a marketing decision. They analyze, they realize that there's not a lot of good publicity by suddenly imposing these more onerous fees or even making it more difficult for people during a crisis. They, that just doesn't play well, and it doesn't expand your consumer base. But on the other hand, offering little morsels every now and then, as as the circumstances require, that they can maintain their customer base. So insofar as, I mean, you know, they're, they are by charter, a commercial enterprise. So thereby, their charter requires that they achieve their number one goal is to achieve maximum profit for their shareholders. It is not to serve the community. We are the consumers. We're the source of that revenue for them. So the purpose of the, you know, every one of their actions is dictated by that one simple goal, which is to achieve as much profit as possible. That's not necessarily when we're talking about essential and critical utilities. And this certainly has transitioned over the course of the last two or three decades, transitioned into a very critical utility, similar to when electricity came into being. And that's why you see in cities like Holyoke and Westfield and Chickaby, those cities that had industrial systems, they turned, they made electricity because they considered it so critical to their their survival and sustainability, they made it a municipally managed and controlled utility, even to the point of creating hydroelectric dams and other sources of energy that would make them, that would provide them that service to keep their city viable. This is no different in that respect. And I think, you know, for, but there will come a time for a conversation about, hopefully, after the survey is completed, the larger conversation about, is it necessary for us to have our our broadband services, our access to the internet, be a municipal service that provides more equity, considers people who are less able to accommodate the costs associated with this? And this has all been brought into very sharp and clear focus during COVID, of course. We're conducting this meeting because the internet exists. We wouldn't have been, we would not have been able to do this five years ago. Our consumption of internet is increasing exponentially. Comcast knows that. Comcast doesn't make its money anymore from selling you HBO packages and and various sports packages and fishing packages. That's old Comcast. New Comcast realizes that their revenue is through data. And that's if they control essentially the flow or the systems by which we consume our data, that our demand will continue to increase. Now, the letter that we received from Comcast, and I believe that will be introduced in the public record for the, for further discussion. But it talks about, you know, they they give what they describe as typical consumption, but it's not true. It's if they were offering consumption of one device being used in one household during a particular time. If you're a single mother and you have three children in three levels, three different levels at school, you're suddenly now streaming three systems of education for your children. It's absolutely critical, has to be robust. And that amplifies your consumption three times. If you are downloading movies on your television sets, right now, four K is the peak. Eight K is the goal and coming. Eight K is, you're, you're hitting a terabyte of information in a heartbeat. And as as Counselor Nashville, I'm sure, shared with you his conversation with Antonio about the fact that the trend is, is not where, that we'll be consuming less, we will be consuming more. It is a given. And the costs associated with that will suddenly become onerous. And Comcast, we will continue to be beholden to Comcast, as I said, who enjoys the protection of not having a competitive system. There is no competition. And so in that, with that in mind, it is imperative that I think that we at least send a message. And it's heartening to see that we did send a message to some degree, at least. Something came up on a, something was flagged by Comcast that compelled them to respond with a letter to us. I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't think we're bringing down this corporate hegemony, but I do think that, of course, we are generating some concern with them. And I'm just, I'd even welcome the debate. I don't even, I mean, I'd be over the moon if we were successful in this and any level. But I want the debate and the discussion to be engaged and and in a way that recognizes all the things it touches on, the social justice, education, health care, government, every dimension of our lives that we tend to take for granted is directly piped through or channeled through Comcast systems. That makes me a little uncomfortable. So I, I, I am very grateful for my cosponsors. And I also am grateful for Counselor Rebecca Lisi's walking point on this. And I'd like to point out, in their Holyoke, they voted seven four to approve their version of the resolution with two absent. So it was, it is a surprisingly close vote. I don't anticipate something similar here, but at the same time, I, I, this is, this is a fight that doesn't end today. It hopefully starts today.
Thank you, Council President. I always appreciate following Counselor Dwight. So anyway, the, so I, I want to start by just saying that our, this resolution and the other resolutions that are, that are being endorsed in other cities are already being successful. When we first started drafting this earlier in the week, the, the, the rollout for this was going to be this spring. And it's already been pushed back till the end of June. So there's, there's a measure of success there. And that, you know, with us all working together, we can actually affect some change here. I want to thank Director Antonio Pagan for spending a few minutes just really boiling things down for me in some very easy to digest ways. One of the things, and his, he, he's kept our city up and running with our IT for many years now. His rule of thumb is that your data needs will double every two years. So whatever you have today, in two years, you're, you're going to need twice what you have now. And that there's, that it's very difficult for you to also stop that growth as during that time. I mean, you, you can go to, you can buy, if your, your TV breaks, you can go out and buy the same device you have right now. You can try to buy the same phone you have right now. But the fact of the matter is, all of the technology that you buy to replace what you have is, is working at much higher capacity for data. And so, for example, right now, the, I, I learned this this week. I didn't realize there was actually four K. I was completely happy with my current TV. And that, that the, the newer televisions are going to be four times what many people currently use right now. So data that, you know, if you eat up a hundred and fifty units of data with, within a month, you multiply that times four, and you're starting to approach what this cap is. The other thing that was, was really helpful with, with Director Pagan was that the, I, I talked to him about the basic needs of both employees and students within North Hampton, you know, and that, and families in North Hampton, families with children. And he, by and large, he said, you know, our employees are doing fine. They're, that, that they wouldn't be impacted by this because of the type of data that we share between departments. But what's going on for families at home is actually another story. They're working remotely, lots of video conferencing. The children are learning, distance learning, learning remotely, that there's all of these devices now, as Counselor Dwight pointed out, that are all going on at the same time. And that, that those two are also draining data. And the last thing I want to mention here is that, you know, we keep thinking in terms of, you know, what's taking up our data? You know, it's, it's our computers and our laptops and maybe our phones. But the thing is that each time we buy a device, it could be, it could be our refrigerator, it could be our doorbell, it could be security cameras. It could be all of these devices. It could be a new furnace. Everything is now logging into the, the internet, and that is using data as well. So this, the, the ceiling of one point two terabytes is actually something that we're quickly approaching. And that it's not something that's way out there, that only five percent of the people are, are getting to. Five percent are there, but the rest of us are very quickly growing into that. So I want to thank the, my cosponsors here. And I also want to ask the rest of our colleagues on council to support this resolution. It's the right thing to do. And let's join other communities in, in, in taking this stand. Thank you.
Counselor Jarrett?
Thanks, all three of you, for introducing this. That's something I'm very happy to support. I just had a couple of notes. You know, Comcast has an essential service, but that's only for, for people who qualify at lower income. But it's only available to those who haven't had the service, had service with Comcast in the last three months, which means that, you know, lower income households that were paying their usual prices to Comcast would be unable to lower their bill, even if they would otherwise qualify, unless they stopped their service for three months, which is not practical. Also, there is a state bill in the House, HD six, six, three. And that, it's, it's an emergency bill, so it's temporary until the state of emergency is lifted. But it ends, it prohibits data caps, price increases, new fees, and shut offs during the COVID emergency. And it has sixty four sponsors now in the House. And I sent the link to Laura, so it can be part of the record. But I wonder if support for that bill would be something that we would also be interested in. It could, you know, we could think about it and do it on the second reading. But that seems like it fits in very well with our current, or with this resolution. And, you know, our, our representative Sabodosa has, is one of the cosponsors.
Counselor Dwight?
I, for one, would accept that as a, as an amendment. And I actually like to propose another amendment. It's been pointed out to me, of course, that there, you know, Massachusetts has its own regulatory agency for communications. And I would like to include in the last paragraph that the letter be forwarded to Karen, Karen Charles Peterson, who's the Commissioner of the Department of Telecommunications and Cable for the state of Massachusetts. And I would accept, I think, Counselor Jarrett's, to Counselor Jarrett's point, spot on, absolutely right. I think we should offer every encouragement we can, particularly for this emergency bill. And then amend that, you know, if that would go nicely with the paragraph that already, already encourages permanent legislation that would provide similar protections for the state.
To help Laura out? Do you want to, I'm finding that paragraph. Do you want to give her some exact language? Be it further resolved, the North Hampton City Council urges our state and federal legislative delegation to consider consumer protection. So do you want to go ahead and?
So following that, that be a further resolve that the North Hampton City Council supports and endorses, what's the House Bill number, Counselor Jarrett?
HD six, six, three.
House Bill HC six, six, three for, for approval. And I don't know if you want to include language that expands the emerg, actually, we can approves the emergency bill. And I'm trying to think what else we should put in there, as far as that goes.
Making it permanent. Or considers extending it beyond the state of emergency.
Sure. Does that make sense, Laura?
Are you editing the final paragraph, be it where you're sending it to various people?
That's the second amendment that I was making, but this is the first amendment that comes on the, I forgot which paragraph, that's where we call for.
Four from the bottom.
Okay. Okay. Urges our state and federal legislative delegations to, okay, consider, that's the one you're amending. Okay.
So putting another, whereas, I mean, therefore be resolved clause after that one as another paragraph. And that would be the amended language. By the way, I, I, Counselor Jarrett, I'm presuming that, I asked you, and I didn't, and I'm presuming your assent, but would you offer that as, as an amendment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, then I would second that.
That language sound like what you were thinking, Counselor Jared?
Yeah, yeah, but Laura, could you read it off, all the amendments when, when you have them?
The only thing I missed was the part about the emergency bill becoming permanent. I think I just got that the City Council supports and endorses House Bill HD 663 as another whereas clause, and then I'm just, I know I'm adding the name of Karen Charles Peterson, Commissioner for Department of Telecommunications, to the final, now therefore be it resolved. So I have a feeling I might have missed.
In front of the House bill number, can you say emergency? House Bill?
8663. So it's the Doris's, emergency, sure. And then was there some language about it becoming permanent, or was that just?
Counselor Jared, do you have a good suggestion for that?
Oh, I was going to say that in addition to the na, the number, that if the name, would probably be helpful to have the name, which is an act protecting internet access during the COVID-19 pandemic.
So that now reads, be it further resolved, that the Northampton City Council supports and endorses emergency House Bill HD 663, an act protecting internet access during the COVID-19 pandemic.
And then the next one, for the next part is, and what did we say, encourages?
Oh dear.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Encourages the legislature to consider making it permanent law? Yeah, trying to read faces, guys.
I'm thinking.
Insofar as that, I mean, I think Counselor Jared is the only one who has any familiarity with this, so it'd be a little awkward to, to endorse something that is an emergency response, to understand whether it would make sense to be permanent, but I've, I have no problem imparting that intent.
I mean, we, we actually say, I see, Counselor Jared, you know, our, the, the be it further resolved before then says, we want them to consider protection legislation to regulate and end data cap, so we're saying we want them to do that. In the meantime, we want you to do this emergency one. So maybe it's not necessary, Counselor Jared?
Yeah, that was my point, I think, I think it, it's already referenced.
Okay.
See. So are we striking that last, and encourages the legislature to consider making it permanent law, just ending the sentence after the title of the House bill?
I think so.
Fair enough.
Counselor LaBarge, did I see your hand?
Ah, yeah, but I liked what you had stated, Counselor Sher, but this makes sense. Either which way, I'm outraged, I think this whole thing is unacceptable. The House Bill 8663, I've read about that, and I even talked with a rep today about that bill, so I like the language, and I'm ready to vote on it.
Excellent, um, so did, we had a second on that amendment, is that right, did we?
Yes.
Okay, um, any further discussion on, on the amendments that we just made? Okay, seeing none, let's, let's vote on those, and then we can see if there's any more discussion on the wall.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Mayori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
And Counselor Jared?
Yes.
Okay, um, further discussion as amended. Counselor Mayori, and Counselor Foster.
Right, I just, I was going to comment on some of the logical fallacies I found in the response from Comcast, and I started writing them down, and I kept rereading it and finding more, so I don't think I'll take up our time with that. But I did want to just kind of validate what Counselor Dwight says, because in fact, this mom of three went over her 1.2 terabyte limit by the 21st this month.
Yep. I saw Counselor Foster.
Similar to Counselor Mayori, you know, I, I won't take up much time restating, you know, the, the challenges with, with the response from, from Comcast and the reasons for it, but Counselor Nash, I did want to thank you for that really helpful explanation regarding, you can expect your data usage to double about every two years, that was something I hadn't known, and really helped me put that in context, so thank you for, for bringing that forth tonight.
Other, other questions or comments? Okay.
Yeah, I do have a comment.
Counselor LaBarge?
Thank you, I like the idea too, with Counselor Dwight about having a hefty debate, I would love to see something like that, and have a rep from Comcast come in, and let's give them a good debate. Let's invite them.
Let's, I, I think, let's call it an official invitation.
That's right.
We would be happy to put them on an agenda for a discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Mayori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jared?
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Hey, that passes in first reading, thank you all. Moving on, we are up to the consent agenda, I'm going to read it, and then I'm going to ask for removals. First up on the consent agenda, minutes of January 7, 2021, then we have appointments to various committees, these have all received a positive recommendation from City Services. To the Arts Council, Dana Osterling of 15, 58 Paradise Road, Apartment 1 in Northampton, term February 2021, to June 2024, to fill a vacancy, to Lani Davis, 112 Franklin Street, term February 2021 to June 2024, to fill a vacancy, Historical Commission, Dr. Jonathan Dow, lifting Carolyn Street in Florence, term is February 2021, June 2024, to fill a vacancy, and Reverend Harvey Hill, 19 Ward Avenue, term February 2021, June 2024, this is to fill a vacancy. Um, I believe there is one removal.
Yep. May I request the removal of Dr. Jonathan Dowby?
Okay, Dowby, excuse my mispronunciation, okay, so we are removing the appointment of Dr. Jonathan Dowby, and we will first vote on the consent agenda minus that removal, Counselor Dwight? Would you like, oh, you're muted.
Move approval of the consent agenda minus the removal, please.
Second.
By Counselor Dwight, Counselor Quinlan, there's no discussion on the consent agenda, so, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jared?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
And Counselor Mayori?
Yes.
Hey, next, we will take up that, the appointment of Dr. Jonathan Dowby.
Move approval of Dr. Jonathan Dowby for the, for the position, thank you.
Okay. Motion was made by Counselor Dwight, seconded, I think, by Counselor Mayori, and Counselor Quinlan.
I had a conversation with our city solicitor, Mr. Seawald, about the fact that Dr. Jonathan Dowby and his wife Linda contributed to my campaign in 2019, we are in agreement that there's no conflict of interest, but Mr. Seawald's advice was that I make this public declaration to the people of Northampton in the interest of transparency. To be clear, this doesn't disqualify, disqualify me from deliberating with you about Jonathan's application, thank you.
Thank you for letting us know that. Okay, um, any other discussion on the appointment of Dr. Jonathan Dowby to the Historical Commission? Seeing none, roll call please on this appointment, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jared?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Mayori?
Yes.
And Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Hey, that way it moves forward, and we are now going to recess for finance. Laura, when you're ready, will you please call the role of finance?
Okay, Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Here.
Counselor Shara?
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Here.
Okay, first up on the agenda is approval of minutes from January 7, 2021. Motion's made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor LaBarge, any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved. This evening, we have the second quarter financial report from Finance Director Susan Wright, I'm going to, hold on, let me unmute you, we are just going to cherish every moment and presentation with you, Susan. Happy to see you.
Hey, good evening, everybody, this will be a very short quarterly report, because the presentation by the mayor last week gave you a good sense of where we are midway through the year. I would like to note on the two revenue statements you got, the revenue statement for the General Fund and the revenue statement for the Enterprise Fund, the revenues that you're seeing have not, do not include the revisions that were made after we did the recap. So when we set the tax rate, you always vote the expenditures, but you don't vote for the revenues, so the revenues get adjusted because state aid gets finalized, other things get finalized, so when we set the tax rate, we actually put in the, the real numbers for the revenue. And so when we did the recap this year and set the tax rate, we lowered a lot of the revenue expectations that we had, and we raised some of them, I think the mayor talked about those at his presentation last week, we raised our expectations for ambulance receipts, we raised our estimate for marijuana, and we lowered things like motel and hotel tax and meals tax. Because those journal entries weren't done until Janu, the first week of January, they didn't get included in this statement, so when you look at the revenues and you see the, what we've actually got compared to the revenue estimate, you're not seeing the, the revised lowered estimates. So I will get you a report that will be for the end of January, and that way you can just kind of see where we're tracking. But, that being said, we did revise our revenue estimates for FY '21, and when I look at where we're coming in compared to our revised revenues, we're doing well in all of the areas. We revised, for instance, we had originally budgeted $506,000 for hotel motel, but we revised that number down to $232,000, and as of today, we're at $124,000, so we're about halfway there. So the only revenue in the General Fund that seems to not be meeting even the lowered expectations, as the mayor told you, is parking. And parking is, is going to be one of those areas that is going to be impacted by, by COVID and the lack of activity particularly downtown, it is January, I mean, it is the winter, so it always is kind of the lowest revenue time of the year. But, that being said, the parking revenues are down more than we had anticipated. But other than that, I would say all our other revenues are on track for our revised reduced revenue projections, even building permits are, are meeting their revised projections. So I will get you a, with, once January, the month of January is fully closed in our accounting system, I will get you that, just so you have a comparison, and you can see where we're tracking against the revised estimates. In terms of the General Fund expenditures, there is one account that is in the red, it is the City Clerk's election worker account, and you have an order before you tonight to transfer some free cash, and I think it's pretty evident why that account would be in the red, that the number and people involved in the election was unprecedented. So other than that, I've looked at all of the department budgets, and everybody seems to be either spending at their, at the percentage that they should be at this time of year, or they're actually slightly below it, might be if they have a vacancy in their department or something. I do start doing a reven, a payroll projection for all of the city departments from this point on, so every two weeks, I go in and do analysis of their payroll, just to see if their payroll is, is tracking as it should, and that we're not looking at any shortfalls, because sometimes you might see overtime is up, but they have vacancies, so, you know, it all balances out. So, we are looking at that, but there are no areas of concern, I have to say, right, at least at the moment, snow and ice is not looking terrible, we, but, you know, it's only, it's only February, so. In terms of the Enterprise Funds, I, that same note on the revenue, I will be sending you a new one, which will be a seventh, seven-month look. If you recall, that we revised, at the same time that we were doing the recap, we also revised downward the estimates for water and sewer revenues, and we used $600,000 from the water stabilization and $600 from the sewer stabilization to, so that we could balance the budget and be able to reduce the amount that we were anticipating for rates. Right now, sewer and water are exceeding the lowered revenue expectations slightly, so that's good news. So there are no other areas of concern in the Enterprise Fund revenues, and the Enterprise Fund expenditures are completely on track, as they should be for this time of year. So there's not a whole lot more to tell, the presentation last week was a little bit more in detail about where we are with the General Fund, so if you have any questions, I can take those now or get back to you.
Thank you. Any, are there any questions? Counselor Jared?
I have a question about the pilot payments, most, listed most have paid zero, are we still expecting those, we just get them later?
Yeah, a lot of, each of those pilots have a slightly different formula for their, for the calculation, but almost all of them have some element in their formula that relies on the tax rate being set, so we don't build them until we've set the tax rate. So I don't usually get to those, we usually set the tax rate in November, and I usually send them out in January, and we usually, each of them have different formulas, so most of them are due like either March 1 or May 1, so, so we usually always send out the bills in January.
Great, and I noticed an entry called CARES Aid Relief for $4,600, I'm assuming we're get, planning, or we will be getting much more than that from the federal government for, in the CARES Act, but I was just curious about how that is, is coming back to us.
Okay, was that, is that in the revenues? Is that in the revenues, or?
Yes, it's in 45.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to look into what that is, it's only 4,600. I know last year on that line, we got, we got extra money for our ambulance service, and that money went into the General Fund, and it was for the loss of revenue that the ambulance experienced right at the beginning of the COVID emergency, so that's what went So that's what went into that line last year. I'll have to look and see and get back to you about what that $4,600 is for.
Thank you.
I just saw Mayor Narcoits pop in.
I just wanted, just to Counselor Jarrett's point, we have received more than $4,600 in CARES Act. We've received over 3 million, so, but it wouldn't show up on that revenue sheet because it's a reimbursement program. So it's like we submit stuff to them and they reimburse us. So it doesn't come, doesn't flow like a revenue, am I correct, Susan?
Right, those funds are completely in separate funds. And we have a CARES Act fund and we have a FEMA fund. And together, as the mayor said, we have spent, we're almost $3 million. And we have received from CARES Act so far in actual dollars, about 1.8 million. And we are submitting reports that are due this month for additional funds, so.
And will there be a report on that? I'd be curious to know like what we're, what we've, what kinds of things we've submitted for and being reimbursed for.
Right.
Just at some point?
Yes, I, you know, I think, I think when, when COVID is over, finally over, and the accounting between FEMA reimbursement and CARES Act and any other new federal programs that come down are all complete, there will be a reconciliation period. We will have to have some sort of, you know, it would be nice to have some sort of overview. This is how much we spent, this is how much FEMA gave us, this is how much CARES. I will tell you that we will have, we will have expenses that were not, that will not be covered by FEMA or CARES. If they're shifting priorities, they're shifting advice to us as to what is eligible. You know, it continues to be a moving target. So in the end, there will be some portion of what we've spent on the COVID response that may not be reimbursed. But we're no different than any other city in town across the state. We're doing what the, what DOR told us to do, which was create a FEMA fund and a COAT and a CARES fund and run these expenses through there. And also, if you recall, last year, DOR said that those two funds could stay in the red at the end of the fiscal year, and they would not deficit our free cash. In other words, they wouldn't hold those deficits against us when they certified our free cash. And we are waiting for DOR to make that same determination this year in hopes that they will not hold those deficits, if there are deficits, against our free cash. Because obviously, I don't think by June, we're going to have this whole financial piece of it sorted out.
Thank you.
I just want to say, and I know Susan has really spent so much time on this, and I'm thankful for that, but I mean, what I've told her and what I've told other people is like, we're going to fight the pandemic, and we're going to spend what we need to spend to make sure our people have PPE and make sure, you know, teachers have HEPA filters in their classrooms, or we're going to make sure, you know, all the other things we need to take care of. And, and they better reimburse us, but we're not going to not, you know, we're not going to not take care of these essential needs. Like today, they just, I think she was just on a FEMA call about vaccination clinics, and, you know, there were all kinds of rules and formulas and per capita formulas, and it's like, we're just going to do a vaccination clinic and try to get as many people vaccinated as possible. And, you know, if, if we get fully reimbursed, that's great, but if we don't, then, you know, I think it's the city's obligation to do what we're doing. So, you know, we'll sort it all out and we'll be able to let, you know, again, the big problem is we don't know, as Susan has said, what FEMA will pay for, and CARES is saying, well, first file for FEMA and then come to us. And it's like, we have to file these applications with CARES, but we haven't heard back from FEMA yet. So it's like the most frustrating experience. So we're just going to forge ahead and do what we need to do. And again, all of these are public safety or public health or education or facility safety or, you know, first responder safety. They're all, I think they're all related to the pandemic. None of these are, you know, frivolous things. So we're going to just do what we need to do to keep the city safe.
And we are, and we are tracking the vaccine costs in a separate fund. And we are, you know, the, all of these funds, it is our hope that they are going to pay for the overtime of our Health Department and our response of additional personnel needed for the Health Department. We're paying for PPE for our first responders, paying for the porta potties that we have downtown, paying for disinfecting public buildings, air filters. A lot of the money we pledged to the schools, they are using that for supplies to remote, to be able to teach students remotely. So it's been a huge range of kinds of expenses that we've incurred to deal with the pandemic, depending on which department. But I would say those are among the biggest categories of expenditures.
Thank you for saying that, Mayor Narcoits. Counselor Maori.
Hi, Susan, I just wanted to revisit parking revenue because we've had several public comments over a couple meetings about transferring money to parking because of the lack of revenue. And I, so just to clarify for everyone out there, the parking revenue really just goes to fund salaries, maintenance, everything around parking. Is that correct?
Correct. In a typical year, we would bring in about $2 million in parking, in actual parking meter and other revenue, garage revenue. And we usually budget about 1.8, and that covers the cost of the Parking Enforcement Division, the Parking Maintenance Division, and all of the types of things related to running the parking system. Typically, we will bring in 2 million and we'll use 1.8 to fund the budget, and 200,000 usually goes into what is called the receipt reserve for parking. And that is where we build up a surplus, and that pays for the parking capital improvements that are made, all the repairs we made to the garage, the changes that we've made to automate the parking system. That fund had over $1 million in it at the end of June of 2020, but the parking revenues in 2020 fell short of the 1.8. So they fell short of the 1.8 by about $350,000. So the parking receipt reserve was used to fill that hole. So basically, when it comes in over our projection, it goes into the receipt for, receipt reserve for parking. And when the parking revenues don't meet our projection, that we will use that, that account to supplement that. And that's what we will do this year. So in the end, at the end of this fiscal year, the parking revenue that we budgeted will be made whole, but the receipt reserve account will be tapped for that, whatever that shortfall is.
Right, so you don't anticipate any contributions to the RAA account, of course, if we're.
Correct. This, this year, no, this year and last year, we will not, but we did build up enough of a surplus, and, and when parking and things pick up again, there will be no problem building that fund back up.
Thank you.
Do you see another hand? Thought I did. No. Okay. There are no other questions for Susan. We'll move on. Thank you so much, Susan.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have financial orders. This is 21.191, in order to acquire land on Nash Hill Road in Williamsburg for water supply protection. And this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoits and the Department of Public Works, ordered that, whereas the city of Northampton owns a surface drinking water supply in the town of Whately, which is surrounded by watershed land owned by both the city and private property owners. And whereas it is in the interest of the city to acquire privately held parcels within this watershed as they become available for sale to protect its drinking water supply, where certain parcels of land within the watershed are available for acquisition, and it is in the interest of the city to acquire parcels for watershed protection. Now therefore be it ordered that the city council authorizes acquisition of gift purchase eminent domain or otherwise, the fee interest in one parcel of land containing 14.79 acres, more or less, located on Nash Hill Road in Williamsburg and shown on a plan entitled, quote, "Plan of Land in Williamsburg, Massachusetts Prepared for Northampton Department of Public Works", unquote, dated December 16, 2020 by Holmberg and Howe Land Surveyors. This acquisition is for the purpose of the sanitary protection of the West Whately Reservoir, part of the city of Northampton's water supply. The parcel shall be held in the custody and control of the Department of Public Works. Further, that no appropriation is necessary for the acquisition of the easement authorized hereunder inasmuch as sufficient funds for this acquisition have been appropriated in Water Enterprise. Okay, is there?
Move a positive recommendation, please.
This has been made by Counselor Quinlan and seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Counselor LaBarge, did you have your hand up?
Yes. Yes. I have a question.
Okay.
Who am I talking to, Donna or the mayor?
I was, I was going to have Donna present this, so she's here by, because of the other items. So if she's here and can talk about it as well.
Okay, great.
Hi. Hi, again. Okay, so this is a, as it says in the order, a 14.79 acre parcel that is close by to the West Whately Reservoir. And what we do is we try to purchase land as it becomes available that is in zones A, B, or C of the watershed. So this parcel came available, and, and we were able to bring it forward to you for approval. So the three zones of the watershed depend on how close to the reservoirs the land is. And what we want to try to target is Zone A of the watershed. So Zone A is, is defined as land that falls within 200 feet of a tributary to a reservoir or within 400 feet of the reservoir itself. So this parcel actually has four acres that falls within Zone A because there's a stream running through a portion of the property that goes directly to the Sanderson Brook, which feeds into the reservoir. So this is a good acquisition for the city and to protect the quality of the drinking water. There's about 1,000 feet of frontage on Nash Hill Road, and it is in a residential area. So what we want to do is we want to prevent any sort of development of this parcel. We want to prevent erosion, we want to prevent, you know, any sort of logging activity. So it's definitely in the city's best interest and for drinking water quality that, that we are able to acquire this land and, and control it. So that's kind of an overview of what we're looking to do.
Thank you. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, what is the price that the city's paying for that 14-something acres?
We had an appraisal done, and it is $140,000. That, that was with the appraised value of the land came back as, and that will be the purchase price.
Okay, I do know, and mayor, when we had purchased the property around, across the street from Mr. Skabisky, we're also, and which could have been development, and I don't think it has become developed anyways, right, mayor? We're not putting anything, any homes in there. My question is that, on the opposite site, also which the city bought, are way back, Ned Huntley wanted that property very badly because of logging, okay? And the price of the logging that we could make money on? We've never gotten any kind of information, which we requested. I don't know how many times have we made any money on that logging? And if you could find that out for me, I would appreciate that.
I, I'm sorry, counselor, I'm not clear exactly where you're talking about, but maybe we can.
The mayor knows, because he was the mayor then, and we had great concern, some of us counselors, because Ned Huntley wanted that property very badly, not just to protect the Whately water area there. It was the wood that he was very concerned in thinning out the trees, but also hiring a logger to make some money. So my question is, have we ever made any money by removing the trees from loggers?
So I can, I can generally answer your question. I'm sorry that I don't know what particular parcel you're talking about, but in general, we do not acquire land to log it. That is not the goal of watershed land acquisition. The, the goal of watershed land acquisition is to protect the drinking water.
I think, yeah, I just, what I think the counselor was referring to, because I do remember this, this discussion and debate, is that part of the appraised value of that particular parcel that we were looking at, there was a timber value as well that was built into the appraised value.
Yes.
That's what she was referring to, and I, and so, and I can't remember, yeah, I'd have to really go back and look. I think I was actually council president, I don't even think I was mayor at that point. I think I was still on the council with you, counselor. And I think that, that that was a question about whether that logging ever actually happened or not. So I think that's what she's referring to. I know we don't actually buy it for logging, but there was a parcel that did, would require some logging, and so the city would yield some logging revenue to offset the purchase. That, that's how it was presented, and this would have been, again, 2008, 2009, something like that.
That, that is exactly right, mayor. That is the, the ordinance that I'm talking about. And I know there was five of us counselors who had great concerns about that. So we were never told if we had made any form of money from that or not, but we were told that we would make some money. So I don't, I'm not objecting to this ordinance. I'm for protecting our water there. I also do know this site, because I've been to Whately many times, and I don't have an objection to it, but I'm just wondering, because I'm hearing from you, Donna, that apparently it's to protect building, okay? How many acres are actually, could be used for building?
Well, in this particular parcel, it's, it's 14 acres. I mean, a lot of it is forested and sloped, but there is 1,000 feet of road frontage. So, you know, theoretically, someone could build along that 1,000 feet of road frontage. It would be a very attractive building site potentially. But, you know, what we want to do is we want to prevent development, we want to prevent erosion primarily. And, and, you know, we want to be able to control whatever activity happens on this land. So, so that's what we're looking to do. As far as your other question, I will have to research what you're, what you're referring to and, and get an answer to you. So I'm sorry, it was just a long time ago, and, and I don't know.
Not a problem, but I agree with this order 100% of protecting the area.
Excellent. Counselor Quinlan, to the Nash Hill Road order.
Yes, just out of curiosity, the, there's no development there? Now there's no buildings on this property at this time? And if there are, there's nothing, okay?
No, there's nothing, no.
Counselor Jarrett.
I, let's see, I wondered if you could talk about the philosophy around public access. You know, for example, very near to this property, we have the Henhock Trail, which the city allows people to walk on, but most of the other watershed land doesn't have any public access, not even for passive recreation uses such as hiking. So I wondered if you could speak to that, and then also curious about what kind of behaviors would jeopardize the water supply for such, you know, is it, is it an issue of, you know, people bring their dogs? And, but, yeah, if you could speak to that.
Yeah, the, you know, public access around reservoirs is, is something that is regulated by the state. It's not necessarily a Northampton philosophy as much as it is DEP regulation. So what would be concerning to us as a drinking water supplier is recreation activities in and around the reservoir that cause erosion. So such as like ATVs, snowmobiles, heavily used hiking paths that, that would sort of beat down the naturally occurring trees and shrubs and sort of understory and sort of impact the ground in a way that would cause runoff into a stream or a reservoir. And then we would also have undesirable activities like littering, dog excrement, fishing in the reservoir, which, which is like actively, you know, polluting the reservoir. You know, DEP does have really stringent rules around this to, to the point where most public water suppliers, including us, have patrols or required actually to address any sort of activity that we find in the watershed. So, so we often. So, so we often find people who camp there or who start fires. Or again, who are operating ATVs or, or other motorized vehicles, you know, through the woods. And when that does happen, when we find evidence of it, um, we actually have to report that immediately to DEP. If, if it is within a certain amount of, if it's within like a certain radius of the actual reservoir. There's actually an emergency hotline that you have to call to report the activity to them. Um, and, and there are requirements that the state has for us to monitor activity within the watershed. So, um, you, you know, we, we have an employee whose job it is to patrol the, the watershed. So, a- and, and we do find a lot of illegal activity there. So in terms of our philosophy, you know, what we are trying to do is stay in compliance with DEP regulation. Um, and, and we're trying to make sure that we have, um, you know, clean water. And, and this is one of the important ways that we do that. So, you know, philosophically, I understand that, that people would want to access this property, but we are constrained in what we're able to allow and not allow.
And thank you for that.
Other questions on this order? Okay. Seeing none, Laura, a roll call and a positive recommendation, please.
Counselor La Barge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation. Thank you, Director LaScalia. Um, next we have twenty one point one nine two, in order to appropriate free cash to City Clerk for elections and DPW for asphalt. This is upon the recommendation of the mayor, ordered that two hundred eighty eight thousand seven hundred and twenty five dollars be appropriated from FY twenty one general fund, undesignated fund balance free cash to the following accounts. Thirty four thousand five hundred and twelve dollars, the City Clerk PS election workers account. Four thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars, City Clerk PS overtime account. And two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the DPW Streets Asphalt for Road Improvements.
Move to proof.
Second.
Motion then made by Counselor La Barge, seconded by Counselor Thorpe for a positive recommendation.
So these are, um, you, you heard the reference earlier, looking at the revenues to the City Clerk issue. We had a severe, um, overage in that account because of the sheer number of folks that, um, that our City Clerk needed to bring in to help with primarily the processing of the mail-in ballots. And, um, we had an unprecedented, you know, we obviously the, the mail-in ballots themselves were unprecedented, but we had an incredibly high turnout because of the presidential election and a high number of people who utilized those ballots. Plus, we did early voting, plus we did regular in-person voting. Um, and so, um, so we, um, it was like a little ballot factory in there on any given day. There were tables set up and people were separating envelopes and, you know, so it was, um, so anyway, this is to try to true up that budget. The asphalt, uh, is actually for, um, the asphalt that the DPW purchases. And, um, the asphalt plants open on April first. Uh, right now, they're all closed. Um, and you may have noticed, and, uh, the directors here who can discuss it more, but you, you may have noticed over the last several years that our Streets Division has really, in addition to the reconstruction work that we hire contractors to do. The, um, our Streets Division has been doing an increased amount of, of pavement repair in its own right. Uh, not just the normal pothole repair, but they've actually been doing some, some, um, full-on street repairs, uh, you know, uh, um, and have done several streets around the city to, to try to shore them up and, and, um, and fix some of the defects. And so, uh, we had been planning to actually increase, um, the amount we were going to allocate to asphalt in the twenty twenty one, uh, budget. But then obviously when COVID hit and we needed to scale back, this was one of the areas that we didn't, um, increase. And we basically told the director, let's wait till free cash is certified. But this is, these are, this is funds to basically, uh, purchase asphalt from the asphalt plants to both do pothole repair, to do curb repairs, to do sidewalk, asphalt sidewalk repairs, and then obviously to do, um, uh, work to particularly, um, you know, uh, ro- roadways that are in difficult shape, but aren't, don't, don't rise to the level or, or too far down the list to, to actually be repaired through a contract, uh, process. So that's what the, um, that's what the purpose of this is. So, you know, elections and asphalt, those are sort of like, you know, um, things people like, I hope. In terms of fixing, uh, fixing our roads and making sure we have a good election system. So I think these are, um, um, I think, uh, reasonable and wise expenditures.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Counselor Quinlan.
Well, I just, uh, ju- the, the mayor mentioned that there was a, a thought about increasing the budget for asphalt for twenty one. Uh, and now here we are approving, uh, some free cash for it. Is this about the amount you thought that it would be increased?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, um, I, you know, we were, the, the challenge is that we, uh, this is a line item that's like O M M. And because of the way the construction season falls and the way, um, so there's often money from different fiscal years sort of get used, you know, get slid into the next fiscal year, and so monies are always being, um, moved along a little bit. Sometimes they're not spent, sometimes they are spent, um, but they eventually all get spent. And, um, and so this, in some ways, is for a little bit more of a forward funding of that so that we are ahead next spring. But, yeah, we were thinking on the level, um, it's, I would think it had been funded at a hundred and twenty five. And we were thinking that it needed to be, um, in the area of two fifty to even possibly more. But this will basically help us, uh, catch up and also get ahead to be able to have, be able to sign a contract for when the asphalt plant opens. Um, and then we'll be reassessing going forward as we, um, as we put together the budget for twenty twenty two. But I think ideally, two fifty would be the right level to have going forward, um, on a going forward basis. But this will at least jumpstart what needs to happen for, um, spring of twenty twenty one.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Foster.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I just have a question for you about, uh, the election. And I wanted to double check because you referenced that it was more, we needed more poll workers to count all of the mail-in ballots. Um, and I know one of the, um, the charter amendments we have proposed is to have mail-in balloting, uh, mail-in voting moving forward. And I wanted to check to see if this was a bump in expense partly due to the pandemic and the quick turnaround of doing mail-in voting, or if this is an expense that we would plan to incorporate into the budget moving forward, if, if that's something we were able to continue doing.
I mean, that's certainly, that's certainly a, a good question. I mean, um, you know, it, it, it's, it's sort of a combination of both. Um, I mean, obviously COVID did put restrictions on, you know, social distancing and how many people could be in City Hall. And, um, you know, we had to spread them all out across lots of different parts of City Hall, um, just because of the spacing requirements. But, um, you know, I think, I, I, I feel like mail-in is going, I mean, I know we've put in our own request for kind of, um, no excuse absentee balloting, which is sort of what, you know, mail-in is for all intents and purposes. And, but I actually think that, um, that, that I, I think Massachusetts is going to adopt on a statewide basis, you know, some form of mail-in balloting that might probably even make our charter change request moot. I think the governor, the secretary of state, everybody has talked about how, um, you know, how successful it was. Um, and so I think that's going to be the direction we're heading. I, I think, you know, I don't know that this is the actual numbers we'll need to maintain, because I think the COVID factor also, uh, you know, played into it as well. So, I mean, it, you know, we budgeted, I think, ninety thousand and we ended up needing about a hundred and twenty four thousand. Do I think it's going to have to be a hundred and twenty four going forward? I, I don't know for sure. That'll have to be something that, um, you know, this, again, now that the clerk has had a chance to go through this one time, I'm sure she's thinking of, I could do this differently, or, you know, they probably found efficiencies along the way. So that'll be part of our budgetary discussions with her going forward. But again, I think, um, I think, uh, I think having greater access to voting and having, making it easier for people to vote. I think that would, is, um, you know, an expenditure that most taxpayers would support, at least in North Hampton. I can't speak for, you know, Mississippi or Georgia or some of the places where they're now trying to go back to making it harder to vote. But I think in Massachusetts, you're going to see us moving, um, more in the direction of, of, um, mail-in balloting, uh, going forward.
Thank you. Do we, do we have any hope that we would get some state help with that, if it's going statewide?
No, they've given us, uh, help for the early voting when it's been brought out and piloted. And, you know, they've given us, yeah, but I, I, you know, I don't know. It's a good question. It's a good question. Uh, I don't know.
Always hope, as I always say.
Yes, exactly. Um, so, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, uh, it's, um, we'll have to see. I'm not sure how, how, uh, whether it will come with money attached or not. I don't know. I mean, that was obviously one of the concerns, was that it was a, a large unfunded mandate. And there were some like emergency COVID grants that did go to city clerks, um, on like a per capita basis to help defray some of the costs. But it was not, you know, it was, it was not on that order. So, uh, we'll have to see.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Uh, roll call, please, Laura, on a positive recommendation.
Oh, Laura, you're muted.
Counselor La Barge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with positive recommendation. There's nothing else on the finance agenda. So is there a motion?
To adjourn?
Seconded.
Motion made by Counselor Quinlan, seconded by Counselor La Barge to adjourn. Roll call, please, on adjourning, Laura.
Counselor La Barge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned out of finance and we are now back into the full council. And we are going to pick up these financial orders. So first up, twenty one point one nine one, order to acquire land on Nashville Road in Williamsburg for water supply protection.
To approve.
Second.
Motion is made by Counselor La Barge, seconded by Counselor Foster. Any discussion on first reading? Seeing none. Roll call, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor La Barge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. Next is twenty one point one nine two, in order to appropriate free cash to City Clerk for elections and DPW for asphalt.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is made by Counselor La Barge, seconded by Counselor Mayori. Any discussion on first reading? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor La Barge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading and we are down to orders. And we're at twenty one point one nine zero, in order endorsing the Climate Resilience and Regeneration Plan. Uh, I believe, I know that Wayne is here and we're going to have a presentation. Let me look at, read this order and then, um, we'll get a motion and then we will hand it over to Wayne. So this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcot, planning Sustainability Planning Board and Energy and Sustainability Commission. Uh, it looks like we need to change the date on this, um, which is in the council on May twenty first, twenty twenty. Whereas the North Hampton Planning Board unanimously adopted the North Hampton Climate Resilience and Regeneration Plan as an element of and an amendment to the Sustainable North Hampton Comprehensive Plan in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty one, Section eighty one D. And that was on January twentieth, twenty twenty one. Whereas the Energy and Sustainability Commission unanimously endorsed the Climate Resilience and Regeneration Plan on twelve twenty two, twenty. Whereas the plan creates a comprehensive climate action plan framework for North Hampton with a commitment and roadmap to action. Whereas City Council endorsement does not imply agreement with every recommendation, but does imply acceptance of an overall plan and it's called action. Now therefore be it ordered, the City Council hereby endorses the North Hampton Climate Resilience and Regeneration Plan, an element of the Sustainable North Hampton Plan, addressing the climate emergency by regenerating a healthy community adapting to and mitigating climate change.
Move approval, please.
Second.
Motion is made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor La Barge. And Wayne, I think you should be able to share your screen. Does that seem right?
It's right.
Excellent.
Thank you. Hopefully you can see that.
Welcome. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Thank you all. And special thanks to, uh, Counselor Mayori and, uh, Garrett, who are on the Energy and Sustainability Commission and probably know as much about this plan as anybody else. But, um, so just, I, I'm trying to go this quickly, but, um, you all know that we have a comprehensive plan, which guides a lot of the work that my office does and other departments in the city does. And it's one of the criteria that's used for issuing special permits. That plan was adopted in two thousand and eight, but it's a living document. It's not sort of frozen in time. So we've amended it now three times. It was amended to add the bike and ped, uh, plan, to add the open space plan. And then now, just, you know, in January, to add the Climate Resilience and Regeneration Plan. So these documents are sort of designed to be pulled out by themselves, but it's, it's a key part of our overall comprehensive plan. So what's before you now is the plan itself under state law. The planning board is the board who legally adopts comprehensive plans, but frankly, doesn't mean much unless the other departments involve. So in this case, Energy Sustainability was a key, uh, board, uh, and then obviously going before you all tonight. So that, that's what we want to talk about this plan. It's why, I'm going to finish quickly, um, but I just want to make sure we're all using the same terms and, and you understand what we're talking about. So resilience, people sometimes talk of this about adaptation. So resilience is about being resilient to chronic stress and to acute stress. And in this case, it's about climate change caused chronic stress and acute stress. So acute stress, think of as being, you know, a hurricane that comes and it's worse because of climate change. And chronic stress being, um, more homeless people being, getting Lyme disease because it's warming up. And so we have more prevalence of Lyme. And then regeneration is sometimes used as mitigation, but it's how do we, how do we do our share of the global, um, need to reduce our carbon emissions? We deliberately use the words resilience and regeneration because they mean more, they're broader. So resilience is, we want to be resilient to anything, right? COVID is not climate change caused, but we clearly want to be resilient to COVID. Regeneration includes things like invasive plants that come in. You know, so the goal for us is not just to survive climate change, but to thrive in spite of it. And so regeneration sends a message. We're not just, you know, coping with this all stuff. So those are sort of the premise going through this. The next two slides are probably the most important when I'm talking about this. What's the plan all about? You know, we don't know all the steps we're going to be doing over the next ten, twenty, thirty years. So we sort of trying to build a roadmap to get there. So the first is we're trying to create, um, a target, a commitment for what the city's going to. We don't, we know some of the things we'll be doing to get there. We don't know all. So the mayor set a target for us two years ago when we started this process of being carbon neutral by twenty fifty. That matches what the state's goal is now. And so we've sort of adopted that as being our own goal, but the intermediate goals may be the bigger challenge. So can we make city operations, what the city actually does, carbon neutral by twenty thirty? Can we get halfway to our goal of being a carbon neutral city again by twenty thirty, so for the entire community? And can we get seventy five percent of our goal by twenty forty? So that the Energy Sustainability had a lot of time debating these issues. And one of the sort of looking at is things that are really aspirational, things that are really going to push us, but that we think we can achieve. Again, lots of unknowns, um, but we think they're all possible to achieve. And then the other part of the commitment is weaving equity through all these things. Because some people are what's called the frontline of climate change. Some people are going to be more impacted by climate change than others. And so we want to make sure we address those issues going through. So if we have the big goals, the question is, how do we get there? There's a series of actions and goals we know we need to do to get there. Some things we don't know yet, so we always want to come back to these operating principles. The first is, we're going to be talking a lot about renewable energy and about electric cars. The first is, we're going to be talking a lot about renewable energy and about electric cars and electric heating systems and all sorts of things. But the first and most important principle is always to reduce our energy demand in the first place, right? So if people could walk instead of getting in a car, that's going to be a much greater impact of climate change than making cars electric. If people have smaller homes or better insulated homes, that's going to be a much greater impact on climate change than switching to electric forms of energy. And so reducing things are always a key part. And the second one is one of the things that we're going to be all challenged going forward. You know, we do a lot of community engagement and the community is full of this really good ideas, many of which we used. But sometimes ideas are sexy at the moment. People want to do something. And so part of our charge is to always look at what are the high impact practices? What are the things that give us the highest return on investment? We don't have enough money. We don't have enough time to do all the things we'd like to do. And so we have to prioritize and always come back to, is this thing going to give us the biggest bang for our buck? So then going forward, you know, because we can't really plan out a strategy for the next 30 years or 20 years, whatever the time period is. So we plan every two years to sort of flesh out the plan to say for the next two years, here's the things which we know we can do. Let's move forward on those. And part of that, and you all be involved, and obviously the mayor has to be involved, is thinking about, what does this mean in terms of our capital budget? What does it mean in terms of our operating budget? So the mayor proposed and you all approved money in the capital budget to begin looking at every single city building, to plot out a chart for those buildings to become carbon neutral, right? At midnight, when a boiler breaks, that's not the time for us to think about how do we replace that boiler? And so the mayor of Central Services, and you all funded this, to look at all our city, city buildings going forward. So we need to think about those things. And just as right now, every capital improvement request, the mayor asked, what's the impact on our maintenance budget? We need to start thinking about for every capital improvements request, what's the impact on climate? It doesn't mean everything we do is carbon neutral, right? We're still going to be buying, you know, diesel powered backhoes for the next 20 years. There is no electric equivalent. But at least we won't have that conversation and think about what's the mitigation for, for some of those items. So those are sort of the big picture things. Just one thing very quickly for terms. This is, I know, a little bit inside baseball, but in the, in the climate action world, scope one emissions are things that we're directly responsible for, right? Things that we're creating, you know, greenhouse gases in, in Northampton. Scope two is what's our footprint because of our utility generation, right? So we turn on the lights and a power plant somewhere in Massachusetts is emitting things and methane gas is leaking out of a well somewhere in Texas, right? So that's scope two. Those things are what we're focusing on those plans. For Northampton, just so you know, we are mostly ignoring scope three. And scope three is actually the biggest source of greenhouse gas emissions. Scope three is I buy a pen and the pen comes from China and it's shipped here by Amazon. It is a long carbon footprint. We don't really have much control about that other than educating people to buy less plastic or to buy less things. You have some roles on the, on the margins so that the plastic ordinance you passed has some, some role in this. But for the most part, we're focused on what happens here, not, not what gets made elsewhere. Other people are doing that, right? So we are focused on what gets made in Northampton and gets shipped elsewhere. But to just see the terms of where we can focus and can't. I'm going to go through this chart in detail. This is our greenhouse gas emissions from 2016, which is the last time we did this. But just the, the two big things are buildings, commercial buildings, which includes multifamily, is half our greenhouse gas emissions and residential buildings, single family homes and two families are 18%. And transportation's 26%. So if we really want to have an impact, we need an incredible focus on buildings. We are a very slow growing community. And so we talk a lot about new building codes to make buildings net zero. But the buildings that are in Northampton in 2050, the majority of those buildings already exist. So we can't just focus on new buildings. We have to think about the existing buildings. And likewise, transportation, it's a quarter of our load. Part of that is electrifying transportation. But part of it is all the work that we've done and you've been very involved with on improving public transit, improving bicycles, improving pedestrian combinations and encouraging density within walking distance of where people want to go to reduce those trips in the first place. So when I talk about high impact practices, this is the table we always come back at, the things that really, you know, make a difference. You know, we don't have a lot of livestock in Northampton. And globally, this is scope three, being vegetarians would have a big effect on, on climate. But in Northampton, it really has no effect on climate. So there's, so we always come back to what's the things that we like to make a difference in. This chart's the hardest one to read, but it tells an important story. So if you look at 2016, when you began, at the bottom, the upper left is the amount of greenhouse gas emissions. Ignore the units. That doesn't really matter for this conversation. If we did nothing, that dashed line, that dashed red line at the top is where we would be, right? A flat area. We want to get to zero by 2050. Our consultants mapped out the big picture items that move us down to 2050, but they only projected down to 2030. So those colors that you see on the map are the so-called wedge diagram. Big things that we can do that reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And so you see, they sort of plotted it out for big picture things as if we were aiming to have a steady decrease in carbon emissions from 2016 to 2050. The red line though, is that's the target which we're setting for ourselves. So we're a lot more aggressive. We're saying by 2030, we want to be halfway to greenhouse gas emissions. And we don't really have great data, but we're not on track to meet there. In the last four years, we're not on track. So we have to be really aggressive between now and 2030. And of course, all those buildings that have been built are still going to be there. So we're stuck with these stranded assets. Even if everyone buys new electric cars and everyone buys net zero homes, we have all these stranded assets. So that's sort of the reason why this takes such a big realignment to think about these steps. Now, we have some benefits. You know, Smith College is committed to their building stock, their, their heating and cooling, the thermal loads, being carbon neutral by 2030. And I don't know exactly where they are, but I assume they're probably by far the biggest carbon user in Northampton. So the fact that Smith is a leader in this really helps us be leaders in this. Lots of homeowners are doing so. All of this is saying that we need to do more. We've mapped out some of the paths forward, but we haven't mapped out all the paths forward. And I, I won't go through all these, but these are sort of the big pathways we want to think about. And again, from, you know, from the top, it's reduce our energy load whenever possible. It's switch to renewals when possible. We know that electricity, you know, fossil fuels, oil, natural gas and propane, by definition are, you know, huge carbon emitters. Electric loads already have a large percentage of renewables and that percentage will increase. So conserving when we can, switching to renewables when we can is sort of the pattern that goes through here. So I won't go through each one of these, but a lot of them are building electrification, every building conservation, then electrification. Vehicle reduction, then vehicle electrification. Land use patterns, which you see is fairly far through this list. That's a really critical part. That's probably responsible for somewhere around 15% of our greenhouse gas emissions. And that's where you, you often hear that, right? People are all in favor of buying electric cars, but they may not be in favor of density in their neighborhood. And so that's one of the things you're going to hear coming back. The, the only other one I want to talk on this chart is the second to the bottom one. It is impossible for us to meet any of these goals we talked about by carbon reductions alone. We are still going to need, you know, fire trucks and backhoes are still going to be gas or diesel for at least 2030 and probably 2040 and maybe even 2050. So we need to think a lot about carbon sequestration. How do we store carbon? How do we take carbon out? This is obviously about trees statewide, and I think worldwide, but definitely statewide. Carbon holds, soil holds about three times as much carbon as trees do. So this is about growing trees, but it's also about putting carbon in the soil and preserving it there. So the only way we get to net zero is by saying for every, you know, ton of greenhouse gas emissions that we have, we're putting aside the equivalent into soils or into trees in the process. And then the mitigation side of this, this is adaptive to the climate change. This is where a lot of the city's investment has been. So we've made good progress in this area. This is, you know, in Northampton, the biggest part of dealing with the changing climate, the changes that are already here, is addressing larger storms. So not necessarily that much more water falling down, but bigger storms. So we're dealing with everything from larger pipes, like the, you know, $1.2 million pipes that we worked on in, on Pleasant Street a couple of years ago, to, you know, wetlands restorations we're doing at the Pine Grove Golf Course. So, you know, human built things and natural things. So that's the biggest issues we're dealing with. Heating is probably the next biggest one. We're going to have a few hotter peak days than we used to. That's not the big challenge. It's just the number of days over 90. You know, which can be killers for people without air conditioning and people who are, you know, in different health issues. And then somewhere down the line, we're probably going to have some change in insect vectors and in more Lyme disease and other diseases. That's, we're getting a little bit, not, not a huge amount. So we need to think about all those patterns going forward in the process. I'm not going to run through all that. You know, the plan itself is 66 pages. I'm not, I promise you, I won't run through it all. But just in terms of sort of big ideas, again, we think about some things are cross cutting. This is conservation first and equity and thinking about city operations that cuts across everything that we do. You've all voted, you, we were on a much more aggressive community choice aggregation program than most communities have. The planning for that's moving forward. So you've already given the mayor authority to do a joint powers agreement, to sign with other municipalities and do it. And we're just sort of exploring, what does that mean? But today, 20% of our energy is from electricity. And as we electrify, that electric load will go up dramatically. So even as we're reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and reducing, you know, gas and oil and nat, and, and natural gas, we're going to be using a lot more electricity. So think about what does that look like and how do we get there? Buildings, of course, as I've already said, this is about new buildings, making new buildings net zero, but also how do we go back? Northampton is one of the first communities in the Commonwealth to authorize the property assessed clean energy program, where people can make improvements to commercial buildings and basically get a surcharge in their property tax. That was on hold for a while because the financing wasn't working, but Mass Development is taking that on. So you're going to start seeing more of it. So it's those kinds of efforts to get people to value these kinds of things. The carbon sequestration, I've already talked about. This is everything from, you know, Pine Grove Golf Courses. One of the things we're focused on right now, we're going to see these, everything from street trees to conservation areas to DPW watershed lands going forward in the process. And then on the resiliency side, you know, dealing with stormwater is a key part. Waste sort of crosses over between resiliency and regeneration, right? So if we just look at solid waste, the impact on our greenhouse gas emissions in Northampton is significant. 1% is still a huge number, but it's dwarfed in comparison to other things. But if we think of solid waste as also being source reduction, not just getting rid of all the stuff that we generate, but reducing source in first place, then it has a much bigger impact. That's why I mentioned the, the plastics reduction we're then see all, we're involved with. Transportation, I've already talked about. This is 26% of our load. And we associate land use for transportation because a lot of the benefits for land use are reduced trips. That's not the only benefits. We know that people who choose to, and, and we still believe in, in free choice. People should live in rural places, suburban places or urban places, depending what they want. So our goal isn't to force people to live anywhere, but the goal is to allow people to live there. You know, you all know people probably moved out to suburban areas because they couldn't afford to live in a more urban area. That's what we want to count. We want to make sure that we, they are able to live in those urban areas, not that they have to. But we also know that people live in urban areas, their units tend to be smaller. So besides the transportation unit, the transportation savings, we're also getting smaller buildings, which are an efficient part of the piece. And then the final category is just broadly health and safety. You know, the mayor said that one of his top goals the next year is for us to acquire and open our community resilience hub. And that's very much what this is about. You know, community resilience hub, we've got lots of things that aren't climate related. If we had one today, it would be helping a lot for COVID. But a lot of the purpose for community resilience hub is to provide a safe place for people in need because of climate change. So thinking about all those things in, in that context is, is part of the health and safety piece. And that's my quick piece. Just so you all know, we have two websites in case people want it. The plan lives at this resilienceregeneration.com. And we've also set up a dashboard. We're still piloting it, but a dashboard that's a little, you know, if you want to read the plan, you can look at it, but if you just want to sort of get a quick preview of what we're doing and some actions, there's this dashboard at designresiliency.com. And that's going to grow and evolve over time. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Wayne, if you stop sharing, then I can see all the people.
Yeah, sorry.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks so much. I, I have a quick question. When you were talking about Smith and their commitment to 2030. So are they, are their buildings are part of the 50, you know, around 50% of business buildings? They're included in there?
That's correct, yes.
So do we know, do we know what percent of that 50%?
I don't know offhand, so I can't tell you, but Smith has done a really good job of accounting. So we, I could call them up easily and find out that number.
Okay.
It's still going to be a small percent. We're a big city, but.
Okay. Um, Counselor Dwight.
I'll move to approve, by the way. That's, I thought we just put around a four.
Second.
Thank you. It's been made, the motions been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Jarrett. Counselor Dwight.
Wayne, I'm going to be the first of many people who are going to say thank you. And I, I know and understand and appreciate the work and, and actually the challenges that were associated with the development of this, this exhaustive, but you know, as you point out, not a complete and final iteration of a plan. I, and you know, I was in the mid, middling stages when I was on energy and sustainability. And, and I know, in fact, actually at that point, we thought we were going to be voting on it. Well, that was almost a year and a half, almost two years ago. But the fact that you walked it back and allowed for even more discussion, contribution and development. And I particularly appreciated that because essentially what we've, what you've laid out here is the, the critical step of defining. Look, I, I look at it as a map or an atlas of sorts. This is not, it is, we're, we, you know, as we all grapple with this enormous issue of planetary impacts and climate change. And trying to figure out where our place is in this, this community of 29,000 people. And how are we going to reverse this course? It's, at that point, you, you're just left with platitudes and you don't have a lot left. There's no, there's not a lot of resources for us to figure out how we can all work as a group towards a specific goal. You've also laid out, I think, very well, and in the course of this conversation, about the challenges that we actually realistically have to face. We can make aspirational statements about the goodness with all the best intentions and not realizing them. The, the opportunity for failure is huge if we don't understand what those aspirations entail. For instance, you, you, you point out very, quite rightly, that the existing inventory will continue to be a drain and will continue to contribute to the, the crisis that we're trying to subvert. We can't, and nor probably should we, go and compel everyone to suddenly retrofit their homes at considerable expense in order to meet the, the aspirational goals of this. You know, if someone just bought a furnace this year, a natural gas furnace, they're not going to say, well, by 2030, I'm going to get a new furnace and then we'll all be fine. That's not what's going to happen. So I, I'm grateful for the realistic perspective and dimension on this and at the same time maintaining the commitment to the aspiration. And I'm especially grateful for all the contributions and the, the rather enthusiastic debate. And everyone I ever heard talk about this spoke with the same commitment to an objective, but at the same commitment to an objective, but at the same sense of urgency was prevalent every time. And as you pointed out, this came up, of course, this affects most debates that we have going forward. It had it it affects how we address COVID. It affects actually how we're going to discuss all future and even tonight. Land use regulations, it is, it is informed, the plastics reduction debate, how we deal with our waste stream. It really, and 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 in fact, actually, I think that was the main goal for me was that this, every conversation we have about every issue and decision we make, this should be embedded in it as a priority for the focus of discussion. And just one editorial comment, I mean, we heard during the course, for instance, about the discussion, defund the police, that there was this this crack about greenwashing because we wanted, we were interested in in electric purchase, a purchase of electric vehicles for the police department. I want the world to understand, or at least I want the community to understand, it is not greenwashing by any stretch. It actually was a devotion to this principle. And the fact that there is a social justice, social equity dimension of this and impact. In fact, even some of our critics have actually allowed that that is the case. It is not greenwashing. It is part and parcel of the whole conversation, the holistic conversation. And it was one of the principal drivers was equity and justice and fairness. And that how critical these things are all part of that same warp and weave. So, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. Thank you again. I'm enormously grateful and I and I take I I I take some hope in this because our previous visioning plans, which came with some exercise and some pain and some debate, have actually served us all very well. You know, ironically, Vision 2020 Plan, now that we really has informed how we've legislated from from those years up to, well, now 2021. And I and and effectively so. But I and I will hope the community remembers the process that was involved, the objectives that were we're trying to achieve and realize that that is that is what I think collectively, at least if we endorse all, all of us endorse this. That is essentially what we're saying. This is what we are going to devote ourselves to, and this will be part of every conversation that we have. And it is not greenwashing. It is a commitment, a moral commitment that we are making and that we're going to, we're going to adhere to. So again, thank you. Sorry for the windy stuff again.
Thank you, Counselor Dwight. Other Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you, Wayne. Thanks also to the current and the former members of the Energy and Sustainability Commission. So as a member of that commission, I'm really glad that we took the extra year or maybe it was a little more to to revise the plan. I think it's much stronger. We've had input from great groups like Climate Action Now and Sunrise North Hampton. And but I do want to recognize that the plan isn't actually, it isn't good enough to do what we need to do to address our part in the climate emergency, which would be to be carbon neutral by 2030. And part of that is, you know, Wayne talked about there, there are many things city government just doesn't have control over and and we need state and federal action. We can hope and advocate for that. But I do encourage us to think about how we can push the boundaries, even if that makes us and our constituents uncomfortable. But I think that's that's absolutely necessary.
Thank you for that. Other other thoughts, Counselor Foster.
Thank you, you know, Wayne, I appreciate the presentation and I know how much work over the years has gone into this and you know, I I had heard some feedback about a year or so ago that that the plan needed to be stronger. And so and so I do appreciate the extra year and and the city's focus. Counselor Dwight, I agree with you, what you said, that it's working to do what we can as a municipality toward toward climate change is a moral imperative and something that I'm I'm glad to see laid out here in a way that that can guide us. And, you know, one of the interesting things about representing Ward Two is that there are a number of climate activists inward to, and it's it's an issue that that many of my constituents care deeply about. I spent a long time on the phone with somebody yesterday who has been working on climate activism sort of in a in a different corner for a while. And he came to me and he's like, Karen, what can I do to help the city work toward these goals? And so, you know, as I'm looking at the plan and and thinking about that conversation, I just wanted to at least throw the ball out there that there are people in North Hampton who want to be a part of the solution and and would like to be helpful in that. And I know that there's so many different ways that that can look, so many different forms. But if a as this work progresses and as opportunities arise, let us help our constituents help move this forward because it is something that that people do want to be a part of.
Thank you. There. Their comments, thoughts. Okay. Thinking none, I again will thank you so much, Director Fiden. And thank you all who who've put in work for many, many years to create this living document that will keep being worked on and revised as we try and meet these goals. Thank you, everybody. Okay. So this is in order. So roll call, please, on first reading.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. Okay, that passes in first reading. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have ordinances that have not yet been referred. We've got 21.189, an ordinance to create an incentive for smaller houses by allowing two half scale units to count as a single family for density purposes. So process note is always with these is that Master of Law, Chapter 40A, Section Five requires the City Council to submit zoning ordinances to the Planning Board for review within fourteen days of receipt. And for the Planning Board and City Council or a committee designated for that purpose to hold public hearings thereon together or separately prior to adoption. Counselor Dwight.
I would move to refer it to the Planning Board and which required by our rules, but then also we would consider another joint hearing with the Planning Board and the City Council as far as hearing goes to discuss these items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, I think, by Counselor Maori. Any Counselor Jarrett?
I would ask if we could amend that to also refer to the Community Resources Committee.
I'll accept that amendment.
And second accepts that amendment? Okay. Uh, any discussion on that referral now to planning? So community resources and and planning and legislative matters. Counselor Nash. Oh, you're muted.
I do it once a night and did it then. Yeah, I think that's a great idea to refer this to to community resources. We're already featuring a number of zoning related matters at our next meeting later this month, so. It but and and they're all related to, you know, creating a greater density, more affordability and and greater flexibility with structures on properties. So this is, this is, this will fit right in with our discussion.
Okay, so just to clarify, are we, where is the hearing going to be held? Is it going to be held in community resources or is it going to be held in legislative matters? And either is either location, either committee going to be a joint with planning?
Well, the problem, of course, well, where it will be held is here on Zoom. But the I don't want to speak for the Planning Board. I haven't had an opportunity to actually on this point. I don't know if Laura has, but so I don't, I don't want to schedule a hearing without having them being able to weigh in on the on on that schedule.
Yeah, Laura.
We've definitely been discussing a joint hearing with the Planning Board and Legislative Matters and just haven't decided whether it'll be at the Planning Board's meeting on the 25th or the Legislative Matters Committee meeting on March 8th.
And when does Community Resources, when could they take it up?
We're targeting February 23rd.
Okay. So could it go to Community Resources on February 23rd and then have a joint hearing on March 8th?
That's what I would prefer, that the the idea that Community Resources would be the place where it's more that it's presented, discussed, vetted, and then when people come to the hearing, they'll, you know, that they'll be better informed and that discussion will be more focused.
Okay. Everyone's amenable to this? Okay, so let's confirm that with a roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that has been referred. And I don't see any other business on the agenda.
Oh, poo. All right. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Foster. Roll call, please, Laura, on adjourning for the evening.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.